All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the January 25th meeting of the zoning subcommittee. As an announcement at the beginning of this meeting, and just so folks know, this meeting is designed as a subcommittee working session to try to give us an opportunity to have our first real discussion about the Village Center rezoning projects we've been working on. I don't intend to take public comment at tonight's meeting. I'll take questions and points of order or anything else that might come from the audience, but this is not intended as a feedback gathering session, but more as a working session for the board. We will schedule a public comment session at our next meeting, but it'll probably be a timed item on our agenda to make sure that it is restricted to a certain period and gives us enough time to carry out our work as a subcommittee. So, the first item on our agenda is announcements in minutes. That was my announcement. Thank you Bruce for the, or sorry, was it Bruce?
It was Rob.
It was Rob. I'm sorry, Rob. For the minutes from our last meeting, which were lengthy and detailed. Were there any comments or corrections? I didn't have any.
No.
I don't have any, obviously.
Good, yeah. I'm moved to approve.
All second. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. So, what we have on our agenda tonight basically is a, what we're calling, review of citizen recommendations and preliminary approaches for North and South Amherst. So, as I mentioned, this is our first opportunity to talk about the feedback that we've gotten over the last couple of meetings that we've had. And what I'd like to do is guide us in the direction of trying to make some decisions, or at least talk about the high-level structure of what we want to do for Springtown meeting. We've heard numerous people tell us, and I've essentially confirmed back to them, that no matter what we do, we would not be going ahead with a joint article like we did in the fall. So, I think we have a commitment to pursuing North Amherst and South Amherst separately. So, one of the highest level questions or discussion items that I have are relative priority of those two items, and also the notion that's been suggested several times in several ways of doing some sort of town-wide form-based code that might be applicable more generally than the narrow areas that we've been looking at. So, and just to give you some sense of my own thinking on that, my thoughts are that I'd like us to be measured in our approach to pursuing this. I don't want to overreach and try to do too much all at one time. And so, I'm thinking that my priority right now is North Amherst, and that pursuing South Amherst, to me, makes more sense as a second step rather than doing it in parallel as an approach to Springtown meeting. But that's just my own personal sense of it, and I'm interested in feedback from my fellow board members and from staff on that as well. You guys have any thoughts? Rob?
I agree that I would prioritize North Amherst as well. I don't, I don't know if you intended, but I, what I would do is I would, I would do Atkins Corner if we could, but not push it. Make sure that we do North Amherst right, and then do Atkins Corners. But if we can do both, I don't see why not.
I agree with that as well.
That sounds good to me.
Okay. I noticed a couple of people came in late, so I'll just repeat the announcement I made at the beginning of the meeting, that we're not expecting to take public comments tonight. We have had extensive public comments at our last couple of meetings. So, if you have brief questions, raise your hand, try to get my attention, and I will try to address any questions or issues that come up. And we will have a public comment session at our next meeting. But if you came here to speak your mind to us tonight, and always, people are welcome and encouraged to send us written comments as well. That's often a more useful way to get your thoughts over to us, because we have a chance to digest, read and digest them before the meeting. So, anybody in the audience that are watching on TV, feel free at any time to send us written comments into the Planning Department email address that's on the Planning Department page on the town website, amherstdma.gov. All right, Mr. Tucker?
I'd like to ask about the prioritization of North Amherst in terms of, just in terms of strategy. It is a much more complex Village Center. It has many more issues to resolve, and if it would be possible to, and I think what you're talking about is where you're going to focus your time and energy and work. But if it would be possible to propose and get adopted, basic form-based regulations with fundamental form-based regulations associated with Atkins Corner, which is simpler, has fewer issues associated with it, I guess what I'm asking is, are you talking about priority in terms of what goes on a warrant, or priority in terms of what you're going to work on?
I'm talking about both essentially, because the time that we have available, both in our meetings and obviously your time to help us with the process dictates the timetable for when things move ahead.
Right, that's why I asked.
So, what I'd like to try to avoid is spreading ourselves and yourselves too thin, and if the goal is to get as much done for the spring as we can, and that means bringing forward two big articles that we haven't had time to fully work through the details on, I'd hate to see us in a position where we're having a hard time getting things passed this spring and be back in the summertime where we are now, still trying to get the process started. I'd really like to, at the very least, have one strong article that we can get past and that we can build some degree of support around, and use that as a starting point or a launching point for further initiatives. If it turns out that we can do, as Rob said, if South Amherst is simple enough that it doesn't present any major technical issues, and we can get it ready for the spring without compromising the North Amherst, that would be okay with me also. But I wouldn't want to jeopardize the primary North Amherst effort if that happens as a result of working on South Amherst.
I'm just thinking, again, strategically, that in terms of getting to, if North Amherst is substantially more complex and intractable in some ways, and requires more work, more compromise, more thought, then, and Atkins Corners does not involve the same level of that, then it would be, it seemed to me, would be useful to try and, not so much to spend immense amounts of work on it, because I'm not sure it would take immense amounts of work, but to get, to have a, as you say, a strong article, some chances of success on the warrant, then Atkins Corner is easier to do, and more politically acceptable. Having done that, there's a certain amount of momentum, and if it takes more time to work on North Amherst, as it might well. What I don't want to do is get to a certain point, something's on the warrant, and discover that we're not going to be able to get North Amherst done in time for the Springtown meeting to consider it, and have nothing. I'd rather have something that goes on the warrant that is acceptable to, you know, more than two-thirds majority of town meeting members, and that people can live with, so that South Amherst, somebody can get going, and trying this and seeing how it works. So, anyway, that, I just would put that out there as a way of thinking about this. And it might be that what you would want to do is to begin to work on both and see where you end up, rather than decide in advance. Let it, let it sit for a bit, and let the amount of work and effort that you find each requires determine the relative level of priority as we approach town meeting. We can always put things on the agenda and then move to dismiss them, or on the warrant and move to dismiss them.
Yeah. So, I'm okay with that, but I would also advocate for a relatively early decision, so that we can focus our energy if we need to.
I agree. I agree.
Rob?
I think that's a good idea, too. I think one of the ways that we can start tonight is just by listing the issues involved in both places, to see how much time it looks like it's going to take. But the overall strategy, Mr. Tucker, makes a good point. There's, I think the reason that I'm inclined to want to do North Amherst is because, to me, it already looks like a Village Center. It already, it has been a Village Center. It's something that is, that we're fine-tuning. Granted that there's a lot of controversy there. Whereas Atkins Corner is, you know, starting from scratch, almost. Not quite, but almost. And so, so I've heard, regarding Atkins Corners, I've heard that's a place to start, because we can try it out. But I've also heard, there's no development there, so why put anything there? So, that's why.
Can I answer that question?
There is, I think, a sense of timeliness required in both of them, and the fact that there's nothing on the ground significant at Atkins Corners besides Atkins right now, and that was raised as a point last week, as an argument in favor of not doing anything, or not doing anything yet there, because in particular, the ring road around Atkins is just going in. It's obviously going to attract something. Who knows what will happen there? And so, the argument was made that we should wait because of that. And also, obviously, we've heard many times that we should wait, because we don't know what the traffic situation is going to be with the roundabouts. But for me, certainly with respect to the ring road, that's a, much more of an argument in favor of taking timely action to try to make sure that whatever goes in there is reasonable and appropriate and desirable by the community, rather than just hoping for the best under the existing zoning, which is what we'd do otherwise. So, you know, I don't want to wait forever on that. But, let's see, Mr. Tucker, did you have additional comments on that?
Atkins Cor, there's nothing there, why should we do anything? Because the community has been planning that for many decades. I reject the argument that because we don't have finished roundabouts, we don't know what the traffic's going to be. We have a very good sense of what the range of the traffic is going to be, because that was part of the process of designing the roundabouts in the first place. You don't design them in a vacuum. They were planned within the context of the development of a Village Center there, and with anticipated levels of traffic. So, that argument could then be applied. Let's assume we stop everything, and as some have asked, don't do anything at all in North Amherst until the six to 10 years passes that it takes us to get a new intersection there involving a state road. We then go through the three, two to three years of construction of that intersection. The intersection is done, and we are told by people, you should wait another two or three years to do any zoning here, because we don't know what the traffic's going to I don't accept that logic. I think we have a good enough sense of maximum and minimum, and we can plan around that, and we can certainly plan zoning around that.
And in my view, the infrastructure changes with the roundabouts aren't going to have a material effect on the volume of traffic moving in there. What drives the traffic is the uses that come or don't come as a result, but the infrastructure itself isn't going to, I mean, if you built a four-lane highway over the notch, then it would get used by more people. But a couple of, you know, changes to intersection design isn't going to make people more or less likely to drive to, drive to or through South Amherst. All right. So, I think we have then a decision, if we can call it that, to keep both projects moving, and to, in the relatively near future, make a cut for, make a call for what we're going to move ahead with for Springtown meeting. Is that agreeable to everyone? Okay. Another major structural issue I wanted to talk about was the idea of separating form-based standards from other changes to the bylaw. So, we've got the one obvious split that we've repeatedly talked about, to do North separately from South. That's obvious, and that will certainly happen. It's been proposed and discussed a little bit, the idea of doing form-based regulate, for, in each one of those areas, or perhaps across both those areas, to have a separate set of form-based regulations that's voted on and treated separately than their application to a particular area or areas. And the structure that we had in place last time didn't readily permit that to happen. And so, if we think that that's a desirable thing to do, I think we need to, we'd have to make some changes to how we do the structure of the article. In my mind, the North-South split was a more important one. I think it's very important to give people the opportunity to vote on those separately. I'm not sure how important it is to you guys that we pursue the other axis of splitting, the form-based regulations versus their application to a particular area. Bruce?
I think for me, it would depend on how big the geographic area is of the Village Centers that we determine. As if we, if they do become smaller, I think proceeding with the form-based code would be a good thing, but if they're going to be larger, then I'm not sure, depending on how many people it affects.
Rob?
As you know, I advocated doing form-based codes separately from Village Centers, and I think, I would still like to pursue that, but I think Bruce is right. It's, it has to do with how large the area is. I think what we could do is, is create a section that describes form-based codes for Village Centers. And then, not necessarily apply it anywhere. I mean, I think, I think it could be applied to all Village Centers, but maybe that's too much to do right now. But then we could, we could craft a North Amherst Village Center zone that incorporated form-based code and the additional elements of North Amherst Village Center zone, like the Village Residential Form. And then, and then, so we'll just suck it in, and then, and then, and then at some point in the future, we could use what we've already established as Village Center Form-Based Code, and say, well, that should go here, and that should go here.
Jonathan?
The way the Article 17 was laid out, there were fundament, a set of fundamental form-based requirements for streets, buildings, open spaces, and so forth, which had been developed specifically as a result of looking at both North Amherst and Atkins Corners. One of the characteristics of form-based code is, even in a general form, it is developed in response to something that's there. So, right now, we have a form-based code in here that applies sensibly, even if you don't include the specific requirements for buildings, for which there are different requirements for North Amherst and different requirements for Atkins Corner. Those apply sensibly to North Amherst and to Atkins Corner. I don't know that they apply, and I've made this argument before, I don't know that they would apply sensibly to downtown, or East Village, or any of the other areas in town where Village Centers either already exist or are planned in the future to exist. So, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that. One of the characteristics, I think, that would help a great deal, we might be able to make some tweaks to the fundamental form-based code, and particularly if we used local examples in terms of photographs and so forth, rather than the generic examples that have been used, that were provided by the consultant. Because those are, I think, in many people's minds, and might be in the minds of board members who had to use this 10 years from now, confusing. You know, what, what is the context that we are, what is the form that we are, these design regulations are intended to preserve, replicate, enhance, and so forth. We might be able to do some tinkering with the form-based regulations as we go from Village Center to Village Center. I think to the notion of applying either what we have, or some new version of form-based code to all Village Centers in Amherst right now, won't work, because we don't have the same, they're, they're different enough that they don't have the same reference points in terms of buildings, streets, and open spaces. Anyway, so.
So, I think, Rob, that your suggestion is actually workable, because I don't think that you're actually suggesting that we apply it to other Village Centers at this point. You're suggesting crafting a set of guidelines that are general enough such that they would be applicable in various Village Centers, and then later going through the process of talking about East Village, or any other area, using those guidelines. I think that what we did last time was create that, basically, a set of generic form-based regulations that would have applied to both North Amherst and South Amherst, which are very different. And I think that if we do that carefully, we could do that well enough, so that it would work in other Village Centers as well, with the addition, just as we had last time around, of specific sections that were meant to apply to North Amherst or to South Amherst particularly. It might be more of a stretch to think of doing that downtown. I wouldn't want to necessarily craft something that would cover both Village Centers and downtown. But if we think of it as our sort of general Village Center design guidelines, it might be more effective to.
This would be for Village Centers, and you might have to have really a separate set of form-based regulations for downtown.
Right, or maybe.
Scale and character is so different.
Yes, or maybe make extensive changes to it when you got to the point of doing something for downtown. Chris?
I think if you were going to take that approach, it would make sense to make a list of all the Village Centers that you think this might apply to. And that might include Gateway, and it might include Pomeroy Intersection, Route 116, et cetera, et cetera. But in order to have the general code make sense, it would be good to think of all the possibilities of where you would apply it.
Yep. And I think we have the framework for thinking about that. It's on the map, on the wall behind you there, that we did as part of the master planning process. So, that yes, that would be the right way of doing that, I think. Bruce?
I was just going to say, I think an obvious one that wouldn't fit into downtown, that would with the Village Centers, would be parking requirements. That the parking either beside the buildings or behind would work in the Village Centers, but we don't even require necessarily parking requirements for downtown, so.
That's right.
That wouldn't work there.
There might, we might, however, as we proceed, end up with the equivalent of the municipal parking district, the overlay district, in portions of each Village Center as they developed. I don't think any of them are dense enough now to have that make any sense, but in the future, it might.
Okay. So, I agree that that's a good approach. It sounds like we have a consensus on pursuing that as a direction. In terms of other structural things within the guidelines themselves, Jonathan, you already mentioned one of my items, which is more representative visuals in there. I think that's very important this time around. We've heard that from multiple people. So, obviously, we'd need to think about what we want to include and where. And it doesn't necessarily have to be just Amherst either, I think. Regional things that we think are particularly worth emulating, or trying to incorporate into our landscape here would work well also. You know, we have a large degree of common design history and heritage in the region as well, so there's plenty of good stuff out there that we could probably use. Another item I wanted to mention and talk about, and this was raised by Mr. O'Connor at the last meeting, was the inclusion of the street standards in there. He made comments to the effect of advocating for removing those, and that actually touched a nerve with me, because I also thought that there, a lot of the stuff that was in the street standards was not really within the purview of the zoning. And so, the inclination is for people to look at the pictures of the streets that we have in here, or had in here last time, and to think that we're requiring a certain set of elements, from parking, to have lane configurations and sidewalk placements and things like that. And that's kind of a gray area in the zoning, because obviously, we can't require, you know, traffic design speeds and right-of-way widths and things like that. And I think that that was a fairly confusing aspect of this for many people, and even in my own mind, it was hard to see how we would enforce, or even what provisions in there needed or could be enforced through the zoning. Mr. Tucker?
It's not unusual for a community to adopt zoning that applies to its public ways. It's not terribly common, but it's not excruciatingly rare either. And what it does is essentially force the various folks in the community with jurisdiction over the roads to come to terms about what the road is going to be like. If the town, if the legislative body says, do the roads like that, that has some force. That said, it would make a great deal of sense to have that conversation in some ways ahead of time, with the Select Board, for instance, as the principal body in charge. Where, there's a conversation going on right now about sustainable streets, and street design, and accessibility, and so forth. While these particular regulations, again, were developed with North Amherst Center and Atkins Corner in mind, and their principal purpose, although there is an intent to address what's happening in the traveled way, one way or another, is really to address the relationship between the buildings and the space immediately at the frontage of a property and the street, and how, what that relationship is. So, there might be a way to simply, you know, say, you know, according to town standards down the middle, and really what is most critical has to do with the relationship once you hit the edge of the curb, and from there out. That said, there is some interrelationship between the two. And that's why, I mean, we did, we did run into the confusion with even a member of the subcommittee and a member of the board who was saying, well, wait a minute, this, this isn't our transportation plan. Where's our, where's the potential for future alternative transit options and so forth? And that's not what the zoning is about. There still needs to be some coordination between the two, and I think that's why the consultants who have done this in other communities proposed this. We ran this by Public Works, at least, prior to town meeting, and Public Works was fine with it, as drafted. Understanding that this is the part that happens between the curbs is not entirely, or for that matter, within the public way, the property of the public way, is not controllable by the zoning. It's really up to the Select Board to determine.
So, I guess my point is just that having that in here in such detail really makes it look, to an outside observer, like it is controlled by the zoning. So, maybe we could find a way of illustrating, because I totally hear what you're saying about the buildings' relationships to the street, and sidewalks, and, you know, connectivity between the buildings, and within properties. But if we could illustrate that without having cars driving down a street, and sort of implying that zoning requires that the streets be laid out in a certain way, I think would be a lot simpler and would have less potential to confuse people. Chris?
Well, I was going to say that perhaps we could put a statement in the bylaw, saying that what is between the curb lines, or what is between the right-of-way lines, is a guideline, and not, you know, part of this zoning bylaw. On the other hand, I think in some cases, you will be creating new streets, particularly in the area of the Coles property in North Amherst. It's quite likely that, you know, Coles will want to create new access roads through there, and in those cases, you might want to have them follow these patterns, or guidelines, or whatever you end up calling them.
Right. But, so, but if the town has a comprehensive street plan, if, you know, there's a lot of work going on for complete streets and things like that, I wouldn't want our sort of sketches in here to trump what really is a much more comprehensive amount of work happening by the DPW and the Select Board, and the people who are actually responsible for this. I would want whatever roads get constructed to follow those guidelines, or at least ensure that what we've got in here is, you know, not just similar to, but actually reflects what our actual street plan is. Rob?
Is what you're objecting to, the numbers that are in that chart down there? Because I agree that those are, you know, I don't really have any way of saying that it should be 40 feet and not 44 feet, or whatever. But the pictures help to guide future permitting bodies. You know, when a proposal comes forward and it touches on a street, they're going to want to look at the picture and say, you know, your proposal doesn't really conform to what we think this form is, or it does conform to what we think.
Are you talking about what's in the street, or what's outside of the street?
What's outside of the street, but so it would include the street. I mean, the street is part of the picture. You know, what, so having a drawing of the street, and then the pictures of the buildings within a certain distance of the sidewalk, and with a certain distance of each other, and so on, all that, you know, the picture in the general form, I think, is good, and I would like to keep that. I'm not so tied to the specific numbers that are in that chart underneath.
Yep, so some of the specific numbers are what I'm objecting to, but also the specifics of the illustration of the street. Although it does make sense, what Chris just pointed out, that maybe a distinction could or should be drawn between new construction and existing construction, because if we've got something that looks good and works here and you're gonna build a street, I'm fine with saying it has to look and work like this. But for a street that's already there and we're listing a correspondence between each street type and existing streets, you know, that's kind of the point of this section of the bylaw that we had. The streets don't look like that necessarily, so, you know, people could and did wonder about that, sort of saying, "This is gonna be on Sunderland Road." Well, Sunderland Road doesn't have bumpouts for crosswalks, and it doesn't have bike arrows painted on the street, and it doesn't have this and it doesn't have that.
I think we could, we could address that in the way that Chris has recommended by adding a section essentially describing what the function of the illustrated, and I'm not sure we even need to take it out, the illustrated portion of the street is, and naming the jurisdictions, that there is, if it's a new road, then the subdivision, if it's a private or public statutory way, then the subdivision regulations apply. This is intended to serve as guidance in all instances. The regulations established by the Select Board for public ways in Amherst and so on and so on and so on. So you're essentially saying, this is intend, what happens between here and here is intended as guidance. Everything beyond that is not guidance at all. It is intended as direction to both applicants and the permitting bodies, that this is the way it should go. And we can just, it's a matter of putting the words in there.
Okay, I think that's a good approach. Any other thoughts on streets?
Bruce?
Would we still make a recommendation if we think that it's important that a street be redeveloped in the future? I mean, in the physical sense of adding a bike lane or?
The permitting body, once this?
Well, as we present this entire plan, would we say, as a component of this, we're recommending that these improvements be made to the streets?
You, I think you would do that separately. What you're doing is proposing zoning that includes street design recommendations.
That's what I was thinking.
Or advisory recommendations, but that's all they are, because you would acknowledge in here that the zoning doesn't have the jurisdiction or the authority to tell anybody how to do that. In the case of access roads, however, we could make reference to the subdivision regulations and perhaps some reference elsewhere in the zoning bylaw. And the board, which has the subdivision regulations or your regulations, could, as soon as this is adopted, hold a public hearing and amend the subdivision regulations to refer to these, or to the access street type as a guideline. So it's just, we need to knit the jurisdictions together in a sensible way.
And I really wouldn't want to go too far down the road, so to speak, of making recommendations for there should be a bike lane here, or there should be a sidewalk there, as part of the process of developing this zoning. Just knowing how much more work has gone on outside of our body here, I mean, we're just sort of sitting around a table and talking about it, but there's a lot of other people that look at these things much more closely. So there's the group that's in the process of putting together the transportation plan, and there's the Department of Public Works, and we have a Public Works Committee, and we have a Public Transportation and Bicycle Committee. And all those groups spend a lot of time and effort talking about things like complete streets and what we should do townwide, and how we should prioritize our resources and develop networks of bicycle paths and lanes and things like that. And I wouldn't want our sort of high-level view of it to trump those really much more comprehensive processes that are going on out there. All right, those were the main areas or structural points that I had in terms of high-level view of this. Did you guys have any areas that you wanted to talk about specifically? Rob?
I noticed that you have transfer development rights on here. Is that part of strategic, because I think it is part of the strategic thing. Okay. So, and what I was?
Sorry to interrupt you there, and we can go there if you want. What I was mostly looking at was sort of the structure of the proposal last time around and how we felt about that, and if we wanted to make major changes to it. We have other things to look at, like maps and things like that, as another separate area, and we'll go there, too. And so if we don't have anything sort of structurally to talk about within the proposal from last time around, then feel free to segue into TDR.
Okay, I'm not sure if I do or not, because I actually do have another point, but it might have to do with maps.
Sure.
And that's that, another way of approaching this, maybe, is when we bring a, an article forward for rezoning as a village center, maybe what we should consider doing is having each be two articles. One that identifies the core, that we know is the core, that there's, you know, ninety percent agreement is the core. And then a second one that adds in the other parts. I don't know if that would not be a good idea, but it's a thought. So, for instance, in Atkins Corner, you know, we might say that the core is the part bounded by West Bay Road, West Street, and the Ring Road. So that's Article One, and then Article Two is all the additional parts that are around it. And then similarly, in North Amherst, there might be something that we call a core, that we want to say, "This is the core and should have village center form." And then Article Two is, "We think these other areas are also part of the village That would avert the attempt, or the, I mean, the anticipation of trying to divide articles, divide Montague Road off or divide the east side of West Street off and so on. So come to agreement on something that is the village center and then try and get the other parts.
So I guess my objection to that approach would be, from a high-level, sort of comprehensive view of the planning process, we're hopefully trying to think of something that makes sense overall. And so if you start slicing and dicing that into different pieces, and you could get more finely subdivided than you're suggesting there as well, you might end up with something that isn't really logically coherent, you know, in terms of, here's what we think is the general pattern of land use from the center outwards, and different things should be done to different areas. If you start doing just some of those things but not other ones, then that might not be the best way to do a comprehensive planning process.
Yeah, I think you might be right. I just, a thought, I mean, it's a, I mean, we should think of everything before.
Yeah, right, right. And so you mentioned at the outset, sort of laying out what the issues are, and so that's certainly one of the issues that's out there for discussion. So yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
One of the things that we do on a regular basis is try and anticipate what kinds of amendments people might make, and then prepare a logical way, language, a motion to amend that does that in a clean and sensible way, and it does what they're asked, what they want it to do, and yet does not create havoc with the rest of what is being proposed. So it's, in some ways, it's sort of the same thing, but if the board as a body, the subcommittee and then the planning board as a body thinks this whole thing makes sense together, and it makes, it only makes its best sense together, then it's really incumbent on other folks to say, "Well, I don't like that piece, and I don't like that piece," rather than for the board to present it in a bunch of sort of Mr. Potato Head ways and sticking an eye on here and an ear on there, and that sort of thing.
But with that said, I think that there might be circumstances under which what you're suggesting would make sense. I mean, depending on what's going on on the ground and how the proposal is structured, if it did make sense, it's certainly worth pursuing that kind of approach. Go ahead.
Part of the reason that I, or what made me think of it was the suggestion that Applewood should be rezoned separately. And presumably, we want Applewood, or we had originally, in our proposal, we had Applewood as part of the Atkins Corner Village Center.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, I could imagine passing a Atkins, or having an article that says Atkins Corner Village Center, yes, no, and then based on the result of that, go forward with article that rezones Applewood in one way or another, depending on how. But, you know, I realize that's getting complicated.
Okay. Chris, I'm sorry.
I sort of like Rob's idea, and when he mentions Applewood, I think it may be particularly applicable. There are aspects of the village center rezoning, the AC zoning, that do not completely address all of Applewood's needs. And so when you think about imposing that zone on Applewood, it does certain things to the way they would have to develop their property. That may not be the same as what they're anticipating. So I think we need to think about that, and, not that we rezone things for particular owners necessarily, but Applewood is probably one that's going to be there for a while. Sort of an institution in town, so it may be worth addressing it in a separate manner. Maybe worth considering that anyway.
One of many things to look at. Yes.
May I also say one other thing?
Sure.
And that is that sometimes, when you take a step, you know, to take sort of a big step, and you have other things in mind that you're planning to do later, when you take that big step, people see that, "Oh, it's not as bad as I expected. Things are happening there, but they are actually good things." And so I'm wondering if for North Amherst, taking a big step of rezoning certain parts of it, and perhaps not rezoning other parts of it right now, would give people time to get used to the idea that things are changing up there. And rather than changing everything all at once, give them time to get used to it, and maybe they will see that this is a good thing.
Yes. Okay. Did you want to move on to TDR, Rob?
So, I think we've, the planning board has agreed to ask PVPC to help us with TDR, and we don't know whether they will or not, but I think that's an indication that, you know, the board is interested in pursuing that, and that we anticipate that someday we'll come up with something. It may not be for the spring, probably not for the spring, but some point in the future. So I think we should, whatever we do, we should anticipate that in the future, there will be a transfer development rights provision in our bylaw that presumably will apply to village centers and the downtown, so we shouldn't make a mistake and not accommodate that. And I guess what I mean by that is, we have to anticipate what the potential, what is gonna be transferred in, and what's gonna happen to the zone that is transferred in. And presumably, that will be some sort of density increase. And so we should not set the bar too high to begin with and not have any room to transfer anything in.
So the details of that would obviously depend on what your TDR provisions in your bylaw looked like, in terms of controlling the level presumably of density, or whatever else is being transferred in. It's not clear to me exactly how that would be structured in a way that would make sense with some of the things that we have. Like, in our existing bylaw, for example, downtown, we don't have a minimum square footage per dwelling unit for units above the first floor. So there's no numerical limitation on the number of dwelling units. It's governed by the physical envelope of the building and the amount of land that's available, and the market, obviously. So you couldn't transfer development rights into a zone like that, like in our downtown.
I think you could.
By means of adjusting things like the number of dwelling units, because there is no numerical limitation on that. You could do it by means of building height or setbacks or other ways, too. But so then you're talking about potentially ending up with something that's outside the boundaries that are laid out in the dimensional table.
Right, exactly. That's what I mean. So what I mean is, is we shouldn't, for instance, say, "We want downtown to be more dense, so let's raise the building height by ten feet and let's raise the floor by four." Because maybe the way we want to accomplish that is by TDR and not by, you know, just by fiat.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Going forward, I think one of the, a thing to bear in mind as a challenge in this, and I think I've spoken about this before, is that part of the reason, certainly as was expressed in some of the public comments about the purpose of TDR in terms of preserving outlying lands, part of the purpose is to preserve those outlying lands from development, which means that right now, those outlying lands, let's take two pieces of property. You've got the outlying land and you've got the piece of property in the center, has a certain zoning and has a certain maximum theoretical density of development, of whatever kind, probably residential. And the intent is to take some portion or most of that density and add it to the property in the center. If the end result is that you end up with less density than both properties could create on their own, now, what you're effectively doing is injuring the property owners. I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad idea. All zoning changes property value, all zoning changes brings things up and down, and there's, it's the nature of zoning to do that. But we do need to include consideration of what the overall effect is. If we want to preserve those outlying properties, we can't then suddenly downzone, for instance, the property in the center, so that what we're gonna effectively do is come back up to where we were before.
Yeah, I thought.
So part of, when people think about, "TDR is gonna save us, TDR is gonna, we're gonna both, get both preserved outland at an appropriate level," and everyone has a different sense of what that is, of density in the center, really you're talking about taking both densities that exist and sticking them on top of each other. In some cases, that makes perfect sense, in other cases, that might be more than people could tolerate, and so that needs to be looked at as we approach TDR for any specific location, or a particular center. We need to factor that in as we look at the center itself. Each, again, each of our centers is different.
Bruce?
I would think it might be a good idea to talk about transfer development rights in the future, and start with just downtown and not the village centers at first. Because I think just working on this now and getting it approved is enough. I'm worried that if we have this kind of looming over the village centers, that people will then say, "Well, why should we approve this now?" And then they're gonna try to make it more dense next year, and it might be just too much for people to absorb all that. But I think downtown, I think it would make a lot of sense.
So I agree with that whole thing, basically. So I think that it's pretty, it seems clear to me that we couldn't put together a meaningful TDR zoning change in time for spring town meeting. That's a big change. It's on the order of development modifications in terms of really changing the underlying structure of how our zoning works and how our density is spread out across town, and that's something that will take a while for people to have it sink in with people and to understand it and understand how to work with it. It's a big project. So I'm almost taking it as a given that if we're doing zoning this spring, it probably won't include, or it won't include any TDR provisions. I totally agree with you, Rob, that we shouldn't do anything in the zoning that would be, that would inhibit us from doing that in the future. But, and where possible, we should design for it and allow for it, but clearly, it's not gonna happen as part of this provision. And I also agree with Bruce that when we do start to think about and work on TDR, the downtown as a receiving zone probably is a better place to start than village centers, just because that's the primary center of town as opposed to a secondary one. So I could see it doing both, maybe downtown and village centers, or I could see it being downtown only, but doing it just as a village center, receiving zone for the development rights, wouldn't seem very appropriate.
I guess I would also point out, as we, and again, I'm very much in favor of doing TDR, I think it's a very valuable tool, but I think we need to understand its limits. In the packet today is a map that shows all of the existing In the packet today is a, is a map that shows all of the existing protected lands and to a certain extent, not completely, it also shows, uh, critical environmental resources areas like hundred-year floodplains and so forth, um, and gives a sense of, for North Amherst, which is the example I chose to, to, to map, uh, how much existing protection there is and how much, you know, um, unprotected land there is. In, as part of a TDR, uh, proposal, what you would want to do townwide is map all of the lands that you're trying to preserve, um, and identify exactly how buildable they are and how, how buildable they're not. This is, some communities do it on a, just a center-by-center basis, um, some case, some cases, all they have is the one center, the smaller agricultural communities. We ha- we are blessed with having a number of old mill centers and other prospective new centers, um, and so this, and this needs to be, uh, examined more carefully. But in North Amherst, as the, as the map shows, near the center, practically ringing, entirely ringing in the center, uh, the land is either in public ownership, uh, in prospective, potential public ownership, or protects itself through environmental law. There are some resources that are not yet adequately protected and we can, we can address those, but there's a very extensive set of existing protections. So to do TDR just for, just for North Amherst, for instance, doesn't make a lot of sense because what's the closest to it in terms of, uh, land you would want to preserve is not really threatened. So, anyway.
Right. So, so I would, I mean, if, when we get to that point, I think we'll, we'll have to be thinking carefully about whether it's something that we, we intend to be a regional, I, I don't mean regional, I mean, uh, within a locality within the town.
Right.
Um, sending from a small subset of the town and being received by a certain part of town, or whether you're, you're considering the whole town as a sending area, um, and not making any restrictions about where those rights will flow to. Um, I could see it, both of those being potential ways of dealing with it, and I'm not sure which is better or worse. Another thing that was mentioned at some point, I'm not sure, Rob, if you mentioned this, or if it was one of our, um, members of the public, was speaking about doing it actually on a regional basis, like from one town to another, um, and that caught me a little bit off guard. Was, was that your suggestion or that was somebody else's?
No, somebody did, yeah.
Jonathan or Chris, do you know anything about any sort of a framework for doing that? It, it surprised me that that would even be a, a viable thing to do from a, a zoning, you know, a state and zoning legislation point of view, to be transferring rights from one community to another?
I can think that, I would think that it could be done. It would be complicated. You had to both, both or all of the communities involved would have had to participate in the, the planning for it and all of their zoning, individual community zonings, would have to reflect that. I'm not aware of anywhere that that's been done. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but, um, it would certainly be a, a novel and useful approach, because in many cases, we're really talking about regional resources. We're not talking, um, Massachusetts insular tendencies, notwithstanding, uh, that these are regional resources.
Chris.
One of us could ask PVPC about this, because I noted in the application materials that they had for their technical assistance, they did mention that one of the criteria would be, um, whether something could be regionally applicable and whether it would involve towns working together. And TDR was on the list that was, um, being considered for this type of, um, help, so that brought the question to my mind, how could you do TDR across town lines? So I think we should get in touch with PVC, PC and find out if they are aware of anything like this.
I, I see Ms. Lacour's hand in the back. Is she going to tell me that you were the one who was suggesting that? Go ahead.
Hi, Sarah Lacour, precinct nine. Um, yeah, it, I think New York State, um, and I can do some research, um, and it's, it's sort of a rural urban thing, and so it's, it's a region similar to, to the valley, uh, where the rural towns that want to remain rural, uh, and, and don't necessarily want the development, but they need the, the economic base, they need the tax base, so, um, a, a rural community then transfer is, is a sending zone to a more urban village near them. Um, and, you know, of course, the zone, their zoning has to meld, um, and I know it has been brought up in this valley, say, a Chutes Berry sent theirs to Belter Town, um, where, say, the state school property wanted additional density in that town, and so, and a different, it has been brought up. I don't think it's happening in the state of Massachusetts yet, um, but I do think it's been done in New York, perhaps, so maybe that could, you could learn more about that.
Thank you for that. I'm, I'm sorry to steer us down this, this regional road, which is maybe, maybe more of a tangent, but go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, this, I'm going to continue on that. I think, isn't, isn't part of the, um, zoning reform that's in the legislature providing incentives for, for regional planning, I think, so, so?
Yes, yes. Uh, I don't know, I don't recall that they enable regional zoning. I think, again, we would still be in a situation where each community zoning would have to just absolutely line up with the others to enable this, but, um, I'll go back, maybe, maybe they can change the, the Reform Act to allow that.
Okay, that's probably not enough about TDR for the time being, since that's not our primary focus at this point. All right, shall we start talking a little bit more specifically about the two areas? We've got Atkins Corner and North Amherst listed in that area, um, so let's take a look at the maps and see if we can start making some progress there. Most of the maps we have in this handout are.
The ma-
North Amherst, right?
The ma- the maps of existing zoning and, um, only proposed under Article seventeen are on the boards.
May I just ask a question, Jonathan?
Yes, sure.
Several people, uh, this would be directed to Jonathan and Chris, several people have mentioned about the, what they see as the unlikely aspect of having development on the other side of the new roundabouts because it's so difficult to cross them. As part of this plan, is, is there a plan for pedestrian crosswalks at these roundabouts? Or can there be?
Chris.
There is a plan for the, a crossing at the pedestrian cross, uh, at the roundabouts. There's, um, as far as I know, there is not a plan yet for crossings in the middle or between the first roundabout and the hill.
Mm-hmm.
But that could be addressed, I imagine.
That, that is a matter of putting in a crosswalk. Um, the, there are portions of, we've, we've been looking again at the, the lands east of West Street and east of, of the intersections, uh, the roundabouts, and there are portions of those properties which are either quite steep or, uh, potentially substantially affected, and there's a, there is a map in your packet showing, um, uh, water resource environmental limitations on, uh, the Cole property, for instance, and the properties, uh, adjacent to that. So that, there may be some room in, uh, in the existing situation to drop some of those, uh, properties out specifically, if I can gesture. This protrusion right here includes a, a property that is actually quite steep and is a, essentially a drainage area, and similarly, this is quite steep. But from here down, this is all, sort of all flat. There is, for instance, a question of access has come up before. We have the, the Ring Road going around Atkins, up to which, which is creating frontage for development around it. A place where you would put an intersection for vehicular access to, to these properties here would be right at that Ring Road, and you would have crosswalks there, and that is some distance, hundred yards, from the, uh, from the roundabouts. Similarly, you have Country Corners, the intersection of Country Corners and, um, West Street right here. Some portions of that are going to be redone anyway as part of the notch project. That'll take some time. If, if there was, and right now, as part of the project, there is a, a shared bike path, pedestrian walk quite wide, being established along the west side of West Street as it proceeds south. It would be not a very difficult matter to create a, um, a crosswalk in the vicinity of the actual Cole property, if there was a vehicular entrance there, for instance. Some of the earlier plans, sketch plans, and I do not have copies of them, down here in the vicinity and up near the, uh, entrance to what was going to be Veridian Village, included actually widening the road, putting an island in to, uh, divide or a slow track, putting crosswalks on those. So that's, it's, it's really a design problem. It's not a, it's not an option.
The mixed-use path that you described on the west side of West Street, um, how far north will that extend? Will that go all the way up to the roundabouts?
It will go up to the roundabouts and continue on, um, along the west side of West Street, uh, up past the, uh, entrance to Hampshire College off of West Street and connect to what is already an existing wide bicycle pedestrian path there.
So, um, we can probably count on then a robustly designed pedestrian bicycle crossing on that portion of West Bay Road that comes into the lower roundabout?
Yes.
Because that's going to be explicitly crossed by a fairly high volume mixed-use path there?
There has been some discussion, too, since that, what, what's happening is that the road is pulling away from the Ives property. Currently, the, the road passes quite close to the-
Sorry, the Ives property is the one on the corner?
On the northwest corner, the, uh, the old farmhouse there. There's been some discussion of reusing a portion of the current roadway, the old roadway, uh, as a shared bike path there, and it will be some distance away from the roundabouts. You just cross the road and get on that and continue on around.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Sorry, Jonathan, what was the name of that property?
I'm sorry?
What was the name of that property?
The Ives, I-V-E-S, property. It's owned by Hampshire College. Uh, Mrs. Ives and her family have a life tenancy.
So that path would be, if, if it works out the way that you're describing it, that would be utilizing some portion of the existing roadway, which would be between that house that's there and the, the newly reconfigured roadway?
Whether it was reusing the existing paving or new paving established within what, where the old roadway had been. That's an option.
Bruce.
Now, how far, the, so the pathway will meet up with the existing pathway north of Hampshire College entrance? And then how far south does it go past Atkins? The new?
It goes all the way down to Country Corners.
And where on the map is Country Corners?
Country Corners is this, right here, at the lower edge of the green section there.
Okay, right.
Running west.
This intersection right here.
Yeah.
Okay. And the path is going to go all the way down there?
Yes.
That's great.
I mean, the, there's this whole idea about it being a village center and everything.
And so to go back to Bruce's original question, um, about crossing from the west side to the east side of 116, anywhere along there, um, was the answer to that, that there will be crosswalks at the roundabout or that there could be crosswalks at the roundabout?
There will be crosswalks.
There will be.
Yes.
On, on every entrance, every spoke?
Yes.
So that, that's what's in place on the one on the north end of the UMass campus is there is a?
Yes.
You know, that's ringed by sidewalks on both sides of the road and every direction, I think, but there is little islands and crosswalks on every road there? All right, so, so the issues that we have or that have been raised with regard to the map here, um, I can think of the three primary issues, one of them being Applewood, which has already been mentioned, um, another one being various sets of concerns about the southernmost portion of the proposed Atkins Corner District, um, in the area that the Epsteins have concerns about the shooting range, and the other one being, um, development in general along the west side, or sorry, along the east side, um, and perhaps in particular in the northeasternmost corner there, the northeast corner of the upper Rotary Roundabout, I shouldn't call it Rotary.
Are you referring to the, uh, in that last one, the, the cornfield?
Um, yes, if your view of what is called the cornfield is the same as mine, the property on the, the northeast corner of East Bay Road and-
Yes.
West Street, yeah.
Bruce.
What, what sort of zoning was in place that was going to allow the Veridian Village and is that still in existence?
Veridian Village, uh, was, uh, in, within the ED district, the educational district, and as a consequence, well, there was very little, if any, uh, control beyond, uh, politely coming to the planning board and talking about what, uh, their intentions were, uh, that the zoning imposed on that. It was a college, it was, as defined by town council and others, a college-related activity and it was allowed.
On the map that we have in front of us here, the blue portion in the north is the educational district, and you can see in the very upper right-hand corner how that extends across, um, West Street and, and to some degree, north of there also and further east. Why that was zoned, did you in the first place is-
At the time, I think there was the-
Totally different question.
Expectation that the campus was going to spread across the street. They, they didn't do that very quickly.
Didn't do that at all. Okay. So one of the things that you supplied, Jonathan, was a detailed map showing the, um, resource areas on the east side of West Street, south of the roundabouts, and I presume the intent of this is to show the portions of that which appear to be developable?
Uh, yes, the, um, it should be understood that the river resource area being reflected includes the wetlands buffer, uh, and the portion that is in the lighter blue is the second one hundred feet of the resource area within which the local conservation commission has some jurisdiction for some flexibility in terms of allowing activity, uh, not terribly much. Uh, it should also be understood that the two streams that these, um, resource areas are being shown in relation to are, are different. The stream on the south is considered to be a perennial stream only under Amherst's local wetlands bylaw. That was a decision by a court.
You're talking about the area that is within the lighter blue?
Right. I'm talking about the-
The southern of those two.
The actual stream, which is further south of that, which is right about here.
Okay, the stream is within a darker area?
To which the buffers are, are a reference. If, as was, is the case with the current Mass Highway application for the notch project, if this was determined to be an intermittent stream, then this river resource area would disappear on the south one, and, and all you would have is the wetlands boundary. So we now have a court determination about a local bylaw that, that says, yes, indeed, that's a river resource area and you have to abide by it, but someone could appeal that decision or, or, as in the case of the state, the state could ignore it. So these are not absolute hard and fast, but what they are intended to show is that there's really not all that much buildable area in this vicinity and that such area as there is, is, uh, regulated under existing both state and local regulations, environmental regulations, um, and that that does not proceed very far to the east. Uh, one of the changes that was made and it's reflected on the, on the zoning map, both in your, um, Article seventeen packet and on the, on the plan, is that the boundary of the AC district was moved north to this point here, and then came across like that, so that this entire area in the south, uh, as proposed in the fall, was not even in the AC district.
So, so the fall proposal had the very southern portion of NAVC horizontally across the, the bottom of this blue section here, right out to the property line?
No, no, no. There was an early, that was the September proposal. Let me see if I can sketch this in here. There is an ancient property bound right here. And the, what was shown on the fall, um, map, which is that map there and this map here, uh, this area was the AC district.
Right.
And this area was not.
Right, so that, that's what I was trying to describe. So, so the southernmost portion of the AC district, that the skinny portion that runs along the-
Right, that little skinny, yes, that skinny-
Follows the property line that we can see on this map here and follows the property line northward, including that little jog?
Including that little jog and from that jog, it takes off to the east.
It takes off to the east, out to the end of this blue section, which is presumably another property line?
Right, so another, if we've forgotten there, another potential amendment to the boundary that could be made sensibly on the basis of the environmental constraints that exist is to instead revive a 1970s technique and take either a setback off the front property boundary or off the rear and draw a line like this so that really you're not including the eastern section of this because it's essentially not usable. And there's no point in doing that since the AC district regulations are not predicated on density per square footage.
Yep.
So that, among the options that we have, that's one of them.
Can you tell me what happens to this wetlands buffer outside of the area depicted here? Does it end at that northern extent of the blue?
No, this was, this was simply restricted to the property in question. Let me just sketch on here. See this line? That's the stream.
Yep, okay.
So what you do is you add, there's actually a couple of streams in there, you add 100 feet to the north and parallel it and that's...
So that's based on distance from the stream, not actual elevation? Is that true?
Is there something else?
Please, Chris.
This plan here is very conceptual.
Yes.
Because there are two things going on here. One is that there are wetlands along both of these streams and there's a 100-foot setback from the wetlands in which the conservation commission has jurisdiction based on state law. Then there's this other thing that we deal with, which is riverfront area and the riverfront area is a 200-foot setback from the stream bank. So this line here, I believe, represents a 200-foot setback from the stream bank and this represents a 100-foot setback from the stream bank. But it's not really the same as a 100-foot setback from the wetlands because this map here that we're using doesn't have the wetlands line on it.
Correct.
So in fact, there would be another line if you were to draw this absolutely in a detailed manner showing a 100-foot wet, setback from the bordering vegetated wetland.
And that would be even more constrained.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Under, understanding that again, the conservation commission has the flexibility to allow some activity, although not tons of it, within the wetland buffer as long as it is convinced that that activity is not going to have any impacts on the wetland.
Does that stream cross West Street in any meaningful way?
Yes, it arises. It arises, yes, it is visible, it arises in what is essentially the open space in this green area in here. The open space for the various parts of the Hampshire Plan Unit Residential Development, upper orchards and the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Rob.
It seems like this is more trouble than it's worth. I don't, I don't, I don't feel a great need to rezone this area at all and I feel like if it, if this is going to distract from the chances of passing something in Atkins Corners, I don't think it's worth it.
Bruce?
I would echo that. I was going to ask, how far north do you have to go to just remove that as an issue? Where would that be on the, on the orange map?
Well, let me respond to a couple of things. One is bear in mind that you have, if you look at this larger map?
Yes.
You have residential areas in here and again, walkability and so forth. Part of the intent here is to allow, in some, and we're really not talking about a lot of area here, we're not talking about tons and tons of development, but to allow for the possibility of services, goods and services, employment and so forth and residential activity within ready walking distance of what is strictly a village-centered residence area. So that's part of the intent for it being there in the first place. Otherwise, people have to hop on, it's not a great distance, but they have to hop on the shared bike path and so forth and go up to the vicinity of Atkins. Also, this is a, coming from the south, this is an entrance point. Everyone has come down that hill, often too fast, and hit the bottom and you're, you're in the village center essentially at that point and it would be useful in a variety of ways to have, Country Corners announces that to a certain extent and to have village center activity announce that as well. That's, that's why this was included in the first place.
Rob?
So maybe a better way of doing it is extending the, what we proposed as RVC in the per area around that corner and make that RVC. So there would be some opportunity for mixed use and, you know, small-scale professional there, but it would look like we were trying to make the whole area a business village center. And I also, we also want to be able to control the form there. I mean, that's part of why we wanted the zone to come there. So, so, you know, so maybe there's, like in North Amherst, we had a village overlay. Maybe we could also use an overlay in this area.
The overlay outside the area of the village center district itself is one of the things that I might have suggested that we
Yeah, no, I...
that are getting rid of this time around, but
Yeah, that makes sense.
that's still on the table as a reasonable possibility, yeah. So what you just described, Rob, seems to make sense to me. So that would, that would involve pulling the green RVC across 116 for a small portion of the area that we're looking at here and maybe picking up NAVC along the top of this blue area here?
If it was not, if this is, right, if this is not intended to be part of the mixed-use village, then you would go up to that line and there would be no particular reason to not include the entirety of all of these properties in the RVC, to start drawing lines.
So I understand, Jonathan, what you described as the original intent there. I just don't see, given what you've shown as the reasonable development, developable area there, it's hard to see really a lot of meaningful infrastructure going in on what appear to be basically one and a half house lots worth of space?
We had done some numbers on potential development of this area.
If you only consider the area that's outside of all of these resource areas, I think we were thinking that there could be about 30 units of housing if you were using the AC zoning and it would be, you know,
redevelopment.
mixed-use buildings or in townhouses or whatever. And I think there was a potential for about 15,000 square feet of retail or office space.
Really? Are these lots bigger than they appear to be, they appear to me?
Well, the density is actually quite a lot, you know, if you're considering three-story buildings. And then if you were able to use some of the river resource area, I think that, I'm not absolutely sure about this, but I think that both of these streams are considered to be perennial in the town wetlands bylaw but not in the state wetlands bylaw. So potentially you could, if the designation of perennial stream were thrown out by some appeals court, I believe you could develop within this entire river resource area that's shown beyond the wetlands buffer. And then, I did a little study and it looks like you could get 60, 65 units in there and maybe 23,000 square feet of office retail space. So it's not, you know, chicken feed, if you want to say that, it's sort of substantial.
Okay, so, but it's a sensitive area and it's an area that people are concerned about and it's the furthest away from the village center. And it would be, you know, as Jonathan pointed out, the main connection to the existing built infrastructure is Country Corners Road there, which will now be served by a nice new mixed-use path taking you directly up to the main part of the village center. So to me, all of those things weigh in favor of definitely getting that out of NAVC and maybe considering pulling RVC across the street, although last time we tried to pull RVC into a portion of the village center, it didn't work out so well.
I think we have, we've had at least one and possibly two of the residents of these houses expressing support for rezoning, upzoning their property.
So may I say something?
Yes.
RVC would certainly improve their, you know, marketability of their properties. It would give them an opportunity to build townhouses or something like that. It wouldn't potentially allow them to build mixed-use buildings, but if you're concerned about people's movement across 116, maybe that's not what you want. Maybe you want residential here and not have a lot of flow lapping forth across the street.
Jonathan?
One of the points that has been sort of repeatedly made as a presumption against rezoning this to AC has been that that will somehow screw up town negotiations with property owner regarding access to what you can see along the upper right-hand side of this is the old trolley line, which we hope will become over time an alternative hiking, bicycle, et cetera, path over the notch. So I think one way or another, even if this, the zoning on this change didn't change at all, you're going to have a crossing, a crosswalk for bicycles, a crosswalk for people on foot, a crosswalk for people walking their dogs on a leash, of course, et cetera. So you're, something's going to happen here. And RVC, I think would, actually I think that RVC is a very good compromise and we can talk about boundaries, but maybe we should stick to the current boundary in terms of staying away from environmentally sensitive areas.
Right, so if we, if we were to do as we're suggesting here, which is start NAVC on the northern edge of this blue area?
AC.
Sorry, AC, unless we're going to transport this to North Amherst. If I'm reading this map correctly and following this property line that's sort of visible in blue on the other side of 116 as a reference, that would have that line kind of there? Is that reasonably accurate?
Yes.
Because it's almost directly across from that blue property line that's visible on the west side?
It would look like that. That's the piece.
I'm, I'm sorry?
It would look like this. This is the bottom of the AC district across the street and then coming down and then this would be the new lower boundary, yes.
So I would see though, no need to, sure, that's a larger version, although I'm not going to draw all over it the way I'm doing on my map.
You can actually see the property bound, right there, yes, yes.
Yeah, one of the things with the formatting that we used is that the color is opaque in the map here and so you can't see through to the property line.
That's why we specifically asked them to provide us with those because illegible otherwise.
All right, so the only other comment that I would make on that is that if we're considering pulling RVC across the street that we sort of confine it using the setback methodology that you described earlier for the northern portion there? I don't see any meaningful reason to have that easternmost part of what would then be an L-shaped region be RVC when this map clearly shows that that has almost no potential and whatever, what little potential it has would be predicated on doing development in sensitive areas?
Right, we can come back with a map that shows that.
Okay, that's fine.
Let me point out unfortunately that we're going to turn into pumpkins in about five minutes. We have Conservation Commission coming in on our heels here.
Thank you, all right. Well, so that makes a pretty good transition point. Did we want to, so we won't, we won't do any North Amherst maps tonight. Did we want to talk about Applewood specifically in the few minutes that we have left here? Rob, you had raised the notion earlier of potentially considering that separately. I guess I don't have strong feelings about that at this point.
Yeah, no, I would, I would just ask if staff doesn't mind, making language that rezones it both within a AC zone and if that fails, having an article that says Applewood should be rezoned to, you know, whatever it's supposed to be rezoned to to make it work and that we would dismiss if the whole, if the village center passes.
From a strategic point, that makes perfect sense. The reason that it was proposed to, and proposed to be added as AC is that we had actually spent a fair amount of time looking at the existing zoning districts.
Couldn't find anything.
And there's nothing that will solve Atkins or Applewood's problems in terms of their dimensional challenges as well as the AC district. So we would either, we'd be creating something brand new for one property and you can imagine the fun we would have with that. There, that said, as Chris said, there are some, still some outstanding challenges even with the AC district. We don't, can't solve everybody's problems with zoning. We can do as well as we can. I know, it's a shock, I'm sorry I said that, but it's true.
In North Amherst, it had been proposed that, you know, beyond 100 feet from the roadway, certain things could or couldn't happen. I wonder if in the case of Applewood, if you could designate similar things beyond 100 feet from the roundabout, certain things happen or don't happen? So that you have a sort of multi-layered AC district? Or is that too...
It would make sense if you were doing that for a stretch of, for all of, one side of West Bay Road or something. Again, you get into the fact that we're dealing with one property here and the, we'd have a whole different set of people accusing us of spot zoning for different reasons and it would be a spot. So in many ways, the AC district, at least as things stand now, provides the best answer. We should look at that. I think that's, that's a good idea to see if we, if there, if there's something about perhaps running down to the Ring Road, something about the setback there. I'm not sure that's going to work, but we can look at it.
Okay. All right, I think that's all for tonight unless there's any other urgent business. In terms of next meetings on our agenda, our next meeting will be a week from tonight on February 1st, Wednesday, February 1st at 5:00 PM and then after that on February 15th. Rob?
Are we, are we definitely going to plan to do every other week? I mean, the regular first and third or is there any chance that we're going to add? So we're going to do that on...
Sure, we always have the chance to add depending on what our schedules look like and availability. Because we will have met three weeks in a row by February 1st, I guess my, I have a slight preference in favor of not scheduling one for the 8th.
Yeah, I think...
But I could be persuaded otherwise.
No, I'm not asking to schedule, I'm just, I just want to know whether, whether we're locked in or whether we're going to do it on a day by day basis.
We do have a third Wednesday, a third Wednesday in February or a fifth Wednesday, so to speak, that you could, the 29th could be a...
Right, so either the 22nd or the 29th would be possibilities, but we don't have to decide that now, so we can talk about that at our next meeting? All right, so, but we will cross off the 8th as a potential meeting date then? No meeting on that, that date? Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All in favor of adjourning at 6:30, please pack up your stuff and go home.